Good evening, everyone. The microphones have been turned on. The cameras are rolling. Welcome to tonight's special city council meeting of the, of course, city council. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowery? Here. Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kuper?
Here.
Casaroff?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Pashke here.
Swanson?
Here.
We're going to begin tonight's meeting with your indulgence. Pardon me?
Is your microphone on?
It is.
It doesn't sound like it.
How's that?
Uh, I can hear you, but yeah, yours is fine.
Is this better now? Check one, two.
Mark? Mark doesn't hear.
You sound like you're coming from, I'm picking you up from a different microphone.
Want to turn yours on as well? Go ahead. How's this better?
I don't know. It'll work.
Okay. Again, with the council's indulgence, I'd like to begin the meeting tonight on a sad note, but a joyful one for lives well-lived. First and foremost, we want to extend to the Lovett family our appreciation and our love for their mother Kay Lovett. Some of you may have heard that Kay passed away recently. I had the pleasure of speaking with her daughters Patricia Anne and Mariella. For those of you who don't know, Kay Lovett and her husband moved to Geneva in 1957 in Open Valley Anima Hospital on East State Street. They retired there in 2002. Kay Lovett was also involved in a number of community activities, including, but not limited to, serving on the park board for 23 years from 1975 to 1999, where she served as president for multiple years. I asked the permission from the family to have a moment of silence to honor Kay, and they, of course, agreed. And we also extend that moment of silence for a friend of this council's and, I dare say, of elected and appointed officials throughout the Fox Valley. Some of you may have also read that Brenda Shory, the queen of the Chronicle, her husband Cliff Shory, passed away recently. Brenda and Cliff were married for 43 years. Brenda extraordinarily was a caregiver to Cliff after he suffered a massive stroke 21 years ago. They have one daughter Rita. They had a lovely celebration of Cliff's life this past weekend. So on behalf of Kay, on behalf of Cliff and their respective families, if we could just have a moment of silence to let them know what they were thinking about him. Thank you very much. With that, folks, we're off to item two, items of business, and item two A is to consider resolution 2024-94. Pardon me? Oh, yeah, the pledge of allegiance. Forgive me. On that note, we're going to invite Mr. Maladra to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Anya.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderperson Bowery. And thank you, Alderperson Maladra. Item two A, consider resolution 2024-94, adopting the 2030 strategic plan document. We're going to begin, I think, with a brief presentation by our strategic plan advisory committee chairperson. Oh, yeah, a motion to put it on the floor. Motion by Casaroff.
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Now, the chairperson, Winnie Frankel. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of city council and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight. I am enthusiastically here on behalf of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee to present for your consideration the City of Geneva 2030 strategic plan. As most of you are already aware, the goals and objectives specified within this plan were derived from priorities identified by the community through a broad public engagement process that began well over a year ago. After developing the initial drafts of the plan, SPAC sought substantial input from city staff leadership before bringing the plan to city council this past July. Your input after that meeting was insightful and helpful, ultimately driving edits and further refinement of the plan, which was then showcased to the community in August. SPAC then reconvened to make final edits to the draft document based on the input provided from that community forum. While SPAC has had the pleasure of facilitating the creation of the document, it has been done in consultation with our residents, business owners, city staff, community partners, and you. The plan as presented to you tonight is the result of an intensive process that endeavored to honor the interests of varying points of entry and varying points of view throughout the community towards the strategic plan's purpose and its priorities towards implementation. The purpose of this document as it is presented tonight is not only to serve as a communication document that articulates the collective vision that Geneva is a vibrant and welcoming community where you can live your best life, but to also serve as a living and dynamic starting point for policy conversation and actionable implementation for both city council and city staff. This document is part of an evolution of previous iterations of both the strategic plan and the strategic planning process. With each strategic planning process, we continue to work towards increased efficiencies, not only for the City of Geneva, but within the strategic planning process and compilation of the plan itself. We hope that you are confident that the strategic plan provides the necessary framework to take the next steps forward to our collective goals. I thank you for your consideration, and I think our assistant city administrator has things to add.
Yes.
If I may, first of all, I just want to credit SPAC for their ambition and commitment to not only refreshing the existing strategic plan, but responding to feedback, constructive feedback at times, and taking the time to rethink how the city tracks performance, engages with intergovernmental partners, and shares updates with you and the community. So the plan that's in the packet tonight is a starting point, and I would stress that this is a starting point. Although the adoption of a plan can feel like the culmination of an effort, that is not the case. SPAC was clear from the beginning that the plan is only one component of their work. As you look at this plan, it's important to recognize that everyone experiences the plan differently. It can exist as a policy tool, a management tool, a communications tool simultaneously. The document is driven by the city council at the highest level, yet touches day-to-day operations where city staff implement policies and residents experience progress. It is strategic and tactical, as seen on the handout that I provided. Upon adoption of the plan, SPAC will work with city staff to refresh and revamp the city's strategic planning website. SPAC's, what I would call, phase two involves the deployment of a digital dashboard where more extensive explanations, updated actions, and performance indicator data may be shared with you and the community on a routine basis. We intend to utilize the city's existing technology to provide real-time updates which communicate the accomplishments of city council and staff along the way, helping you make informed decisions regarding budgets, plans, and policy in the years ahead. By making this information available online, residents and stakeholders will have the ability to take deeper dives and explore the connections between all aspects of the plan. Recognizing the complexity and importance of such a document, SPAC will continue to work to breathe life into the plan and communicate progress to our residents. As more data becomes available, the goals and objectives will serve as a foundation for developing new actions and initiatives that drive implementation. The approach to this process is uniquely Geneva and made possible in large part by the time and professionalism of the volunteers of SPAC. They have a unique challenge of blending the input of thousands of voices, a city council, department directors, and themselves into shared goals for the future of our community. They took time to learn about the successes of others, yet didn't copy and paste. They sometimes painstakingly drafted something that is uniquely Geneva. Again, it's a management tool and a communications tool. It's ambitious and rooted in reality, and it illuminates a path towards shared goals and a bright future in 2030 and beyond. So that being said, I'll turn it back over to you, Winnie.
Thank you. And to your point, thank you for the honoring of the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. I also want to say thank you. While I'm standing here in front of you and having this conversation about the strategic plan as it's presented, I am one member of an entire committee, so I really want to say thank you to the rest of the Strategic Planning Committee. We have worked very hard to get to the point that we're at, and we look forward to your feedback and your comments, but I do want to honor and celebrate the work that's been done thus far by the committee. At that point, I will turn it over to what I'm sure are some insights and thoughts.
Madam Chair, we echo your sentiments regarding the good work of the committee. Thank you very much. With that, the floor is open. Any Alderperson who has a comment, a question, feel free to raise your hand. Alderperson Bowery?
Um, thank you. So I have a number of questions, and I will start with maybe the broadest one. So before I get into that, I do want to thank everyone also for all the work that went into this. I think there is an excellent plan here to help drive growth and innovation in the city. That being said, there are some things that I am curious to get some more input on. And one thing, I guess I will direct this to SPAC, but then also a little bit to the council. So I'm not, because I don't have as much experience as some people perhaps in management jargon, but I found some of the terms a little, I don't know, confusing or off-putting, and I was curious if anyone else thought it would be helpful instead of some of the categories to have like single words. I wound up feeling like key outcome indicator was pretty clunky. I know that it's something that was suggested by the consultant we hired. It seems like it's maybe derived from key performance indicator, which I know is a term of art. But as we were going through, I wound up feeling like there was some fuzziness between some of the categories, and I wondered if part of this resulted, or was a result of there being some overlap. So I, like, I, for example, thought, I came up with a list of things that helped me think through the different categories, which was just goals rather than strategic goals, because it's all a strategic plan. Goals, results, metrics, targets, actions, and plug-in plans. So I don't know whether it's useful to stop there and see, get some feedback first.
Sure.
But I have a number of other items.
No, that's great. Here is what I can offer to what I heard in that moment. We did consult with CP2, which was the consultation firm that we used to work through this process, and as it was described to us, these terms are standard practice, that these are the terms that, the industry standard, so to speak. So it's best practices for local governments to use this terminology in their strategic planning based on the experience that she has, and there is, in fact, an entire realm of study associated with that sort of verbiage, I guess. So it keeps it consistent. So when other people are reading the strategic planning document, or at least it was described to us that way, you know, we don't have to do anything any particular way, but just so that you understand how we got there, it was described to us that this keeps it consistent with the other strategic planning documents that people might be reading from the outside, to use a strategic planning document for a variety of reasons. So, for example, if a business is looking to develop here and they're reading a strategic planning document, there's consistent terminology throughout the strategic plans that they're reading, if that makes sense. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to absorb it, absolve it, take it on, but that was how it was described to us, standard practice. And it was, I can give you insight into the process, it did create conversation within Strategic Plan Committee as well, because in private sector, you use slightly different terminology. And so those were considerations that we did discuss in significant detail as an advisory committee. If that's helpful background information, what you choose to do with that, again, is entirely up to you, but that's what I can offer to your comment at that point.
Can I open it up and ask on this point for some feedback from the council, or do you think it'd be, make more sense to go through some of the other questions I have for Winnie and then come back to this?
I think I would prefer that you complete your questions.
Okay.
And my suspicion is that others might have similar questions to yours as well.
Great.
So the floor is yours.
All right. So then, moving on, I was curious, so let's see, on, so this is on page 13. Why, sorry, and again, I know that there's a lot going into each of these things. It seemed to me that physical accessibility could be a really great outcome, I guess, for, am I on page 13? Sorry, under the goal of safe, active, and welcoming community. I felt like that was one of the really great tangible contributions from the DEI Task Force's recommendations, and I feel like...
I'm going to pause you right there, just so that I can make sure that I'm looking in the correct space. On the copy that I have from tonight, page 13 is the strategic goal of informing and engaging residents.
Cool. All right. So the online version is different.
She's using the packet pages, so...
Yeah. Sorry. So let me try to go to, yeah. Safe, so, okay, that's page 20, I guess. Oh, no, because this doesn't have the outcomes. Okay. It's still page 13? Okay. Sorry, I don't have a printout of this in front of me. I just have the packet.
Page 17 of the printed packet is safe, active, and welcoming community. Is this what you are?
I think she's looking at maybe page 10.
Okay. Okay.
Page 10, because the packet online includes the agenda, the summary in front of it, and so the packet numbers are based on that.
Got it. So you're looking at the brief, sort of one-pager summary of each of the, are you looking at the plan in brief?
Yeah, okay, sorry. So I'll just try to specify the section that things are coming under. I'll leave off the page numbers since that's not helpful. So I thought that, okay, yeah, so I was curious why physical accessibility downtown wasn't anywhere on here, because I thought that was a very tangible goal. I understand that the DEI Task Force's recommendations are referenced, but I felt like that's one that could be specifically pulled out and could start figuring out what that means. So, okay, then, moving on, and I guess, some of my questions, okay, yeah, sorry. So, "City operations reflect respect for the natural environment," I think is a desired outcome. Sorry, so that's still on my page. This is under environmental stewardship. It's one of the desired outcomes. Could you tell me a little more about what that means? It feels very intangible to me. Like, I don't know what respect for the natural environment means, so it winds up feeling like it could be more concrete to me.
I'm going to have to say my apologies, because I was living in a world where I was still trying to find your first recommendation and grabbing a pen. So what I think I heard you say on our environmental stewardship is that there is a portion that you think sounds nonspecific.
Yeah. So one of the desired outcomes, I believe it's the second one, is city operations reflect respect for the natural environment. And then I guess that's fleshed out further later on. Sorry, I'm, some of my notes were drawn from the in-brief section, and it's probably more helpful for me to go to where things are.
I think I can offer to that, that generally speaking, as the plan gets further down into the indicators and the initiatives, is when you get more specificity, and so it doesn't entirely surprise me that the conversation of respect for the natural environment might seem intangible, because with each step, we aim to get a little bit more specific about what that means.
So is that, do you have a sense of, was that chosen specifically because it's intangible? Or is, or do you think there's an openness to making it more tangible?
I think...
Because the description underneath it goes on to say, "City policies and practices promote community-wide sustainability and improve resilience to reduce the impacts of environmental changes." I feel like that is substantially different from the shorter description, and I wonder if we could make that the match better.
I will have to look to see, to merge the two things that you're discussing, but I would say generally speaking, the desired outcomes are less specific just as an entity, because they are, again, continuing to take something that's sort of nebulous, like a vision. So we started the vision, which is saying, you know, Geneva is, you know, a place that everyone wants to live, is a welcoming, vibrant community, right, where you can live your best life. That in of itself is nebulous, because that's the vision, and it's up here in a cloud-like space, right, where we say this is where we're headed. And then, as the plan continues to get towards strategic initiatives, it gets more specific of exactly how we're achieving that.
So you feel like even the key, sorry, no, I'll make a look back at the terminology. Where's my second place? So the key, so the desired outcomes, you feel like are still very high-level?
I don't think they're as high-level as a place where you can live your best life, but I don't think they're as specific as plant trees. So I think they're somewhere in the middle, because as you go from here to here, that's sort of what happens with the process, is my understanding.
Okay. So I guess I'm, so I guess, okay. So I guess I don't understand entirely why, if it's going to say in the later description, "City policies and practices promote community-wide sustainability and improve resilience," like, if it's going to have that level of specificity, why, I guess I just don't understand why the overall description doesn't say something a little clearer. Like, to me, there's a mismatch there, and I think it could be more concise, like, yeah, I don't know. Okay.
Noted.
Wait. What's the overall description of your topic?
I'm talking about the overall description for the desired outcome, the specific desired outcome. "City operations reflect respect for the environment." And I, that, that didn't feel very clear to me. There were a couple of small things that I just didn't feel like I understood, but it's possible that I didn't come back to the longer description of them. One is, I think, an outcome from, okay, sorry, so my page numbering is not helpful. So it's "Develop mission and values to drive internal communications and foster a culture of service." Is that, like, is that a document? I'm not, just not clear what that is.
Winnie, I can answer.
Can you jump in? Because I, and I don't know if you're looking at the plan in brief or the plan in its entirety, so that's also not helpful.
That was a, when we were working with CP2, we had a lot of discussions regarding city's mission statements, city's values, and different things like that. I think because Geneva has the approach we do, some of that would typically be driven by a staff standpoint, guide operations. We've looked at this in the past, and we'd given a nod to it in the plan, just recognizing that there might be an opportunity to revisit that at a city level and see what else we could provide there. So it was trying to, it's a suggested potential action for us to take in the future.
Okay. So it's a document? I just, I feel, maybe it was missing a noun or something, like, I just couldn't understand what it was supposed to be.
Many, it'd just be, you know, if you can envision, like, going to a website for an organization or entity and them having, you know, "These are our values. This is what drives our operations here. This is the city's, this is a mission statement." And we have mission statements for several operating departments in the city, but this was just looking at maybe some unifying language at some point. And this was, again, something that just came out as a potential action after talking with our consultant.
Okay. I guess to me, it was vague to the point of being confusing. So, and then another one for the packet on page 17, I wasn't sure what the phrase, "Develop a presence at events taking place within the city," means. Is that city representation? Is that public presence? I'm not, I couldn't follow what that was referring to. I'll have to find where you are.
And you're looking at, is that under inform, engage residents?
Um, sorry, I'll go to page 17. Yeah, so it's a potential action, under effectively engage the community in the longer description of the goals. Develop a presence at events taking place within the city. So there's that, and then there's communication satisfaction, and I, I don't know what either of those means.
I can jump in here a little bit. So the first thing you asked about the, or essentially the second thing, the communication satisfaction is, we've traditionally done a community survey every two years, and so that's one of the ways. We had a lot of conversations throughout the process with, and this was partially even driven by the conversation city council had last November, was a need for residents to make, or to make sure the city is helping inform residents about core city services, processes, and understanding the city's role in some of these processes at the time. And so we started talking about communications, if residents can find the information they're looking for online, and so we settled on communication satisfaction with, sometimes, and I'll borrow the iceberg analogy of, when you're in, when you're in the sea, you only see the tip of the iceberg coming up, but then sometimes when someone can't find something or they can't see, can't immediately find the answer to what they're looking for, all of a sudden, the whole iceberg's out of water. So what we said was, we really want to see how we're doing as a whole with communication satisfactions. And the way we get that information is by doing these routine surveys, making sure that what we're communicating is meeting our residents' expectations, but also, a lot of times, and again, this is where SPAC and sometimes our analysts at the city do some real good work, is going through those written responses to be, the ones who that said they're not satisfied, what are they looking for? Where is the gap? Is it information someone else has, or is it information that we can better communicate? And I think, and again, I'll invite SPAC to elaborate on it, again, there's a lot of meetings here, coming, coming back to front of mind, but the "Develop a presence at events taking place within the city," again, this is a very broad statement, and I think purposely written to provide some latitude for different arms of the city to have a presence, but we've talked about at the time, city's bike committee, having presence at events, being able to get feedback and interact with residents, also to help inform our residents about the resources that exist. SPAC has also, I think, been very purposeful about a desire to look for more ways to interact with residents between the creation of a plan and the formation of a new one, to help inform residents about what those priority goals are every year. And also, you know, I think there was a desire, you know, looking at, is there a way to grow and, you know, have more of a city presence sometimes in some of our festivals, events, our activities, just so we can keep promoting the existing programs and services the city offers.
So is it fair to say that something that might make this clear is adding, develop city, city representation at events? Like, a presence, I don't know what that means.
Yeah. I would, I will interject here to just offer this. There, as we've sort of referenced before, again, we are combining the thought processes and the way in which people view things, and everyone comes in with a different point of entry and level of understanding. So I would ask, I would say that this would be a wonderful opportunity to ask the remainder of council whether or not they also thought it was sort of confusing, or if this was something that perhaps, you know, it's leaving it essentially open enough where you get the point of it. You understand that the point here is that we want to effectively engage the community, and that one of our opportunities is the events that happen in our community all the time, that Geneva really prides itself on. We have a ton of amazing opportunities within the City of Geneva. We have Festival of the Vine. We have Swedish Days. We have all of these things, and so capitalizing on that is a great idea. What exactly that looks like might change. If we specify a city presence, does that then lock it into city staff? Does that lock it into city council? Do we have to be as specific that we say Bike and Pedestrian Committee? Or do what we want to achieve here is effectively engaging the community with a presence that's sharing with them information that they might want to learn? And so, again, this is a process where, while I appreciate that we could absolutely relitigate all of the words, I mean, we really could. We really could, and we have already, and we have had so many conversations as a body, each of the nuances of what the words mean. So I guess my ultimate answer is, I don't believe that that would be necessary personally. If you do, again, that's something that we can talk through, but the ultimate point of it is, again, to say, do we appreciate, as it is written, that the point is to engage the community in the opportunities that we have? And if we feel that way, then I think, no, my answer would be no.
Okay. I don't understand what this phrase means, and perhaps I'm alone in that, but it, to me, it, I, like, it doesn't convey anything clear to me, and so I think my goal is just to try to have this be as clear as possible so that somebody else reading it will also understand it. You're right, I can't put myself in the headspace of other people, so I'm certainly open to hearing what other people think, but I guess I still, I still don't quite understand even from what the two of you have said, I guess, what it's supposed to be. It's somehow, somebody in some way engaging with the things that happen in the city.
Yeah.
I feel like that's so intangible.
Yep.
I don't understand how that's an action item, because I don't understand what it means, but I, okay. I, I don't understand how that's an action item, cause I don't understand what it means, but I, uh, okay. Um, let's see, uh. So I guess something that maybe, uh, is appropriate for a policy discussion at some point later, but that came up for me in looking through the things that make up a thriving downtown, um, is something like a fifteen-minute city model. Um, because I think that that brings in a lot of the things that are in the plan, but also thinking about, um, how it engages with residents, not just visitors, like, from outside of the city, but also how we make sure that the thriving downtown is doing the best job it can to meet the needs of, uh, the people that are close by. Um, and I guess this is a question for, um, staff potentially. I was curious whether we, as a non-home rule community, are allowed to update building codes to incentivize or acquire sustainable building practices. Um, so I feel like this fits in with some of the things under, um, it was a purposeful growth. Um, well, purposeful growth and environmental stewardship.
So I'd say that, um, that was actually one that was developed in consultation with the community and Community Development Department. Um, so again, and I think as envisioned, it's looking at, within the realm of whatever we're able to do, of being able to update those codes as necessary. Um, but I wanna go back where we're talking about this too, cause we're looking at, at some of the potential action items. And I, I wanna remind and reiterate that potential action items, and I'll go back to what I said earlier, are, are starting point for us. These are intended to give a flavor, this is the most dynamic part of the plan. So as envisioned, as there's updates, uh, as there's progress made, these should be changing fairly, these should be the most fluid part of the plan. As we move on into Phase Two and are getting up more and more updates to city council and updating those indicators, the information that's available, you would also expect to be seeing these ones change as next steps become available. Um, and I also suggest as well, with our upcoming strategic planning session, and every November when city council meets, as ci, as city council identifies its priorities, that is also an opportunity for staff to then bring in and say, these would be the next steps. If this is your priority as city council, this would be the next things that would have to happen to get there.
Okay, sorry, but, so, um, I understand this is a little tangential to this, but I think it relates to some of the, uh, desired outcomes and action items in here. So I just, like, I wanted to understand, to kind of keep in mind for a future possible policy discussion, is that something that we're allowed to consider as a non-home rule, or are we, is that outside the confines? Cause again, I feel like it fits under two of the goals, so like, as we're contemplating future action items, I just was curious.
I think it's, it's, like, we're just getting ready to do next week.
Okay.
We are adopting the new environmental building codes.
Cool.
We currently don't have those codes. So this is an opportunity for the city to adopt those co, those codes, which is something we can do.
Okay.
So I think that's what the reference was. And then, if I may, just going back to what Ben said, because I, I think, I think it's, it's hard because you've been through maybe one strategic planning. So every year, the council prioritizes the, the, what we, in this plan, would call the, um, strategical, and then within that, the desired outcomes. Once those priorities are made for the next fiscal year, then staff will say, okay, here were some potential actions that were in the plan, but now we can refine that because we know this next year, the council's goal is this specific outcome. So now we're gonna come to you and say, okay, here's something that will need that outcome. Maybe it requires a policy discussion, maybe it's something that we already had back in the hopper, but because it wasn't a council priority, it's just been kind of sitting back there waiting for that time. So I, in my view, these potential actions are really kind of discussion starters.
Sure.
So you don't want them to be super specific, because that's what, that's the trouble we ran into with the last plan. We put action items that were so specific that when it looked like we weren't getting anything done, it wasn't that we weren't getting it done, it was, it no longer was the council's priority, or the council made the decision not to do one of those actions. So I think that's part of what was trying to be avoided here, and again, just to have those discussion starters. So really, what the council is kind of looking at are those strategic goals and the desired outcomes. And then from there, once each year you prioritize what's on the front burner, we, we refine the bottom half.
Okay. I follow that. Um, does that mean that it's preferable for us not to give a lot of input on action items that are listed here?
I think that's kind of a, a leading question. Um, I think they absolutely want feedback, because what they're trying, again, and I don't wanna speak for SPAC, you all are here. What we're trying to do is give you a flavor for the types of specific actions that would come once that is the priority for the next fiscal year, because we all recognize, we cannot do everything in this plan every single year. At some point, you have to prioritize what's, what's our first priority, knowing that the rest of the plan stays there. And as opportunities arise, we take advantage of them, or in the next year, we say, okay, we've accomplished enough in this section, we now wanna look at this section. So I think feedback is important. Um, but the way you phrase the question, it's, yes, we want feedback, but I also, we also want it within the framework that they built, as opposed to changing the framework that was built.
Sure. Um, I guess I didn't have the, so I, I, okay. I, with the caveat that I find some of the terminology confusing, um, I, I guess I didn't have the sense that I was asking to rebuild the ship. I just wanted to understand, as I read this plan and going forward, like, is this a realm of something that we are allowed to do? Cause it seems like it fits in with a number of the desired outcomes and the specific goals that we've set. Um, and it's something that I've noticed also comes up, not infrequently, at planning and zoning, um, that people are asking questions about this, and yet, we don't have codes about it. So I didn't know whether we were allowed to or not, and it was a question I submitted to the city today, and I didn't get any answers to any of those, so I'm, I'm just going through the things.
Questions because we felt that they were, they were broad enough that it needed to be the body talking about it, as opposed to responding to each of your individual questions, because it's a strategic plan. It's not like a, a, a simple agenda item, this is complicated.
Sure.
And so to try to draft a response to each one of these, I think, was not a good valuable use of time, because it's better to have the discussion here in the open.
Okay, I, I, I think it's a little bit mixed, because I think, um, with one evening to discuss something with this much information, um, it's, uh, it's, like, it's a lot. I mean, I don't know that everyone else has twenty-three different things, and I'm not gonna make you listen to twenty-three things. Some of them are very, um, small, um, but anyway, um, you know, I, I, I'm taking this plan seriously. I feel like it's an important guiding document for us, I wanna respect all of the time that you guys put into it. Uh, so that's, please understand, that's the perspective I have with this, I'm, I'm aiming for critical feedback. Um, uh, okay, so then, um, let's see, I don't know whether this will be helpful, cause my pa, uh, so, let me try to find the heading on the page rather than the page number for you guys.
I got pages though.
So under environmental stewardship, um, I guess this is driven in part by some of the potential actions. I was delighted to see research opportunities to install native plant demonstrations, but it made me think that then the desired outcome could use some modification to be something a bit more broad. Uh, and just drawing from the King County, um, Climate Action Implementation Plan, um, I thought something like, sorry, I'm trying to read my, uh, promote thriving green space and ecosystems. It doesn't have to be that exactly, but I feel like if we're expanding beyond Parkway Tree Canopy to other things, that, uh, that could be, and that leaves room for, I think, other action items down the line that could fit under there. Um, uh, some of this may have to do with me not understanding how all of this was supposed to be read, but I didn't, I wasn't sure why, on the next page, there was no outcome indicator that correlated at all with LED street lighting standards. It seemed like many of the others, there was something that reflected it, um, but then there wasn't anything for that. I recognize, going through this, there were not always direct connections between, depending on which version you're looking at, the desired outcomes and the key outcome indicators, or later, the way it's listed, potential actions and key outcome indicators. Um, and then, um, so this is, uh, and so then, let's see, uh, on that same page down below, where it's talking about, um, waste diversion, um, I'd really like if the council is in agreement to include reference to organics diversion, I think that's separate and distinct from recycling. Um, and I think it's a big growth opportunity, it's certainly also something that appears prominently in the King County Climate Action Implementation Plan, that's a mouthful. Um, and again, the specific way that, or form that that took could, um, uh, be left open. And then, I guess there's a reference to, uh, this, uh, right above that, align efforts to advance the King County Climate Action Implementation Plan. I was, um, I guess, I, I'd love to see us take a stronger action on that, and that's perhaps a policy discussion. Um, but I, I think that sounds pretty vague, too. Uh, like, I like, I like the direction it's going in, but I'd love to see, uh, you know, us develop, look through that and figure out which things seem like we could potentially adopt them in Geneva, um, and then, uh, and then add that. I will say, going through the longer version, I find the bullet points that you chose, um, with the arrows confusing, because it made me think it was like actions to indicators, but then they don't always line up. So I wonder if, uh, it sounds like from talking to Ben, there's been a lot of discussion about what bullet point shapes to use. So I, I understand there's a lot that's come before this, but I, I, uh, I don't know. And perhaps I'm alone in that, but, um, I, I found that, um, like, I kept, I kept wanting to follow the lines across the page, and it doesn't really always work that way, um, and so perhaps a different shape would avoid that issue for other people. Um, and then, from a stylistic perspective, I would, I would have really liked to have somewhere in the document where I could see each of the things from the flow document at once for an item. I spent a lot of time looking at it, uh, with like two screens open, or going between two tabs, because I couldn't see on any single page of the plan, something that showed me for a specific goal, the outcomes indicators, the targets and the actions. So, um, and it, you know, so, uh, that will do me for now, thank you.
Can I just say, thank you so much for your thoughtful contributions? I mean, I know that you have expressed many thoughts today, and I wanted to say that I am appreciative of them. I mean, we did spend a lot of time working on this, and I understand where you're coming from and looking them through, and I am thankful that you are spending that much time and consideration, I do appreciate it. Um, and the bullet point thing, you would be surprised how many different bullet points we've gotten already, just for your reference, so.
Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, SPAC, uh, for, for the work. Uh, I appre, I think the, the goals, the outcomes, the key performance indicators are all very good. I do wanna make sure that we get the key outcome indicators right, because as Ben said, we're going to be changing what the, uh, pro, the policies and what our plans are, however, the indicators are not going to change over time, that's how we're gonna measure it. So most of my questions and comments are on the indicators. Um, one thing that I found missing in the sustainability is the percentage of energy that's produced for our electric division coming from sustainable sources. I didn't see that mentioned anywhere, not even to maintain it, but or also to increase sustainable sourcing. And, and I think that should be in there, that we should have a goal to do that. So I, I thought that was one thing that could be added easily, and, and if the council agrees, I, I'd like to see that in there. Moving on to the indicators, uh, and like on page thirteen, uh, the one I just mentioned, it could be percentage of energy production from su, sustainable sources is increased. That could be a key outcome indicator, that would be your page ten. That's in environmental stewardship. Moving on to page nineteen, that would be your page sixteen, and that's diverse and resilient economy. One of the outcome indicators is increasing hotel tax collection. And, and I wondered why that's important, it's a three hundred thousand dollar line item in our budget. It doesn't seem like it's a significant, uh, area that we should be focusing on. To me, occupancy rates downtown would be way more important, and keeping those at a minimum, just a thought. Um, on page twenty, where we're talking about housing, that would be your page seventeen. Could we also, we, we mentioned Affordable Housing Appeals Act compliance would be a key indicator. How about number of affordable units? To me, that's, that's an easy way to measure it, that we would be adding to it as opposed to decreasing, just a thought there. Page twenty-three, your page twenty, I believe. Again, this is residents actively work with the city to conserve resources. In the potential actions, the first one is establish targets for percentage of utility customers with solar generation capabilities. And I just wanted to clarify, are we establishing a goal for how much, uh, is being produced, or are we establishing a cap? And the reason I'm asking that is because everything we've done so far with the electric division is establishing caps on solar. This sounds like it's the opposite, and we wanna go further. Just wanna clarify what we're doing there, I'm, I'm all for, let's, let's go for more, but just making sure that that's exactly what we wanna do. And in the same area, and again, the key outcome in, indicator for me would be the percentage of power generated by sustainable sources. Let's increase that, or at a minimum, maintain it. Um, again, page twenty-seven, it mentions hotel, hotel tax collections, uh, increasing with inflation. Again, that's a small line item, it impacts a, a limited number of businesses, and unless we're adding a lot of hotel space, it, it doesn't seem like something we should be spending a lot of time trying to increase. Page twenty-eight, on on-target annual, and your page twenty-five, on-target annual assessment for TIF performance. To me, the way to measure a TIF is EAV growth. So, so the indicator would be that EAV growth is increasing, and that would be the indicator. And then finally, on page twenty-eight, which would be your page twenty-five, it's talking about percentage of individuals currently respond positively regarding a sense of belonging in Geneva. That one, I don't understand how we would measure it, and if we're going to be doing this annually or doing some sort of poll, that indicator to me needs to be fleshed out as to what that means, so. Otherwise, I, I like the plan, I, I like all the work that's gone into it. So I think if we get the indicators right, then we have a way of measuring it, so, thank you. Anyone else, uh, Alderperson Mayor, excuse me.
I don't have any particular questions, but I was curious what Alderperson Swanson meant by the sta, like, we've talked about caps on solar. We've talked about caps on rates for solar, but certainly not capping solar.
That, that's not true, we, we talked about reducing the amount that solar customers are reimbursed for their overproduction when a certain level of production reaches a, a certain percentage. That, to me, is a cap, not an incentive to do more.
Okay.
Anyone else on the dais? Floor's open. Alderperson Kilburn?
Uh, just a, uh, couple of questions of SPAC, and, uh, whether these, these topics might have been touched on, uh, with, with, uh, your interaction with the community. Uh, one would be, um, um, the, uh, consideration of, uh, gaming, video gaming, and, um, the city, uh, giving some consideration to, uh, reconsidering our decision from four or five years ago in regard to video gaming, and what that could mean both for, uh, some of our businesses as well as for the city. Now, the amount of revenue that it would generate probably might be somewhat insignificant as it look, as we look at our total budget. But I think for some of our, uh, businesses, if we're talking about economic vitality, I think some businesses have indicated, at least to me, that they would have an interest in the, in, uh, in the city taking another look at it. Uh, I know that Naperville is taking another look at it, it's a topic of a discussion there. And again, it's maybe not look at it. It's a topic of a discussion there. And again, it's maybe not the most important strategic topic as it relates to our planning, but I'm just wondering if anybody might have brought that forward at all during your, your interactions.
Thank you for asking that question. Here's what I can tell you. We had over 1,700 respondents, community respondents, so individuals, residents of the community, and then we had several focus groups with key stakeholders within the community, and then all of that information was sort of filtered through to find priorities. And among those conversations, video gaming did not.
Surface.
Yeah, it didn't show a consistent.
Okay, well.
And I personally, in the conversations that I had, I, I didn't, I don't recall reading any of the comments, or, and it wasn't brought, brought up at our community forum.
Our businesses probably had an opportunity to interject their thoughts as it relates to it, but didn't take the opportunity to do that. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out. And the other one that I'd had was intergovernmental communications and relations. Was there anything that, that might have surfaced as related to that?
Yes. I mean, intergovernmental communications and relations is a pretty broad topic, and I think it is represented here in the plan.
Okay.
So yes, people do talk about, and I think, again, that comes back to what is our point of entry for understanding the ways in which intergovernmental bodies are meant to communicate to begin with. And so there was a lot of conversation about that, and there was also a lot of ongoing conversation where we're communicating and educating ourselves and the residents about what that would look like.
Good. Those were just two questions I had. I might have a few more questions before we finish, but I want to thank SPAC and all of your hard work. And again, a document such as this, and I've been through planning exercises through my business career, and, and you can do a lot of wordsmithing if you want to. So I'm just saying, I think it's a, it's a great plan to, to work from, and, and again, I appreciate your hard work and efforts to bring this to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderperson Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like everyone else. Thanks so much for all the work. I really like this new format over the previous. I think it's a lot more understandable. That being said, the, I'm hoping that an online version might be structured that you can drill down top to bottom on any specific topic. You know, I absolutely empathize with the point of having multiple pages open to see, to read one thing, so hopefully that's possible. It didn't occur to me, but I do concur with Alderperson Swanson about the measure of percentage of sustainable energy, so if, if others are interested in that, I'd sign up for that. But thank you very much, and it's a lot of work, and appreciate yours and everyone's work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alderperson Mayor.
I don't actually have any specific points or questions, but I did want to thank you all for a good report. I've read through it. I felt like it was pretty, pretty easy to flow through. I've read through the previous versions, so the, the jargon worked for me fine. The intent seemed quite clear in general, and I think it stayed at the right level. So I appreciate the efforts, and I know that you've all worked very hard on it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alderperson Casarog.
Hey, Winnie, thank you, and everybody on SPAC for doing this. I agree with Alderman Mayor. I, I found this easier to read than other strategic plans we've read in the past. I certainly understand the philosophy that this is just a guiding document, even a living document, that is probably going to change, and our goals and our outcomes are going to be different in the next five years as we go through it. So I think this provides that starting point to sort of figure out what we need to do, and, and really, the only thing that I noticed that was missing was the same thing that Alderman Swanson said, and, and Bruno, too, about our energy portfolio. I can imagine that didn't come from, you know, community discussions. They're not thinking too much about that, but we talk a lot about it here, and I think it's something for environmental stewardship that would be great to get. I mean, we get our updates, obviously, we know when we sign contracts and things like that, but it would be a good goal to have in there. So, you know, I was going to try to pick out a couple of my more favorite things in here, but I think that's going to do a disservice to some of the other ones. So I do think there's a lot of exciting stuff here that maybe wasn't as forward in other strategic plans, and so a lot of those I agree with, and I'm looking forward to seeing how those progress. What I did want to bring up was how we get our updates from here on out. And, you know, the first section talks about innovative communication and things like that, and I think it was in, either in the introduction or in Strong Governance, but I know we get quarterly updates now, but I'm just speaking for myself here. I feel like they're buried in the middle of a agenda packet. And I, I'm sure I'm the only one here who hasn't had time to go through a full agenda packet and is getting ready for the meeting, and says, okay, these are important, but I got to read the stuff about tonight, skip over it, and then forget to go back later. So I would propose that we get verbal updates of these on a quarterly, maybe from the SPAC president, and, you know, we keep it to a time limit. You know, we don't, I, I'm not saying we have a special meeting about this every quarter. I'm saying maybe half an hour at one meeting, one quarter. I don't think that would be a crazy amount of time. I'm not specific in that. I'm just talking out loud. But I think that would put it out there more in the forefront, not just for us, but for the community. And, you know, people are watching now on TV, or watching later on video. Same thing as what I'm sometimes guilty of, you know. They're not going to read in the middle of the packet after our financials and before the agenda item stuff is coming up, and if they do, great for them. But I think if we get that verbally in a, in a presentation, how things are going, you know, we don't have to concentrate on every single one, every single, you know, all in 30 minutes, but hey, maybe we make great, great progress on the bike plan, you know, and we're, we're proud of that, and we want to put that forward as something that we moved in the next, next step. So I'm sure we can discuss this later, strategy planning or something like that, but I think maybe it's time to try something new there, instead of, instead of the way that we have been doing it. And that occurred to me as I was reading it. So those are all my thoughts. Again, thank you. I think it was great, and really appreciate all the hard work, and hope we hear from you guys more often than once a year, or twice a year.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. I can also say that the, the body of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee is interested in how this will look moving forward as well. So I'll be excited to see our conversations and what we decide upon for how to present that information. So thank you. Yeah.
The floor is open. Alderperson Marks.
It was well done. It was a great job. I can see it. You left it, in my mind, I understood it. You left it broad enough for the council to make the goals as we go through. I do agree with the City Administrator Dawkins that some of the other ones were so tight that, you know, we didn't know if we could meet them or not, and that makes it hard for the council without going through and amending it. I think this gives us a nice, distinct indicators that we can fill in the dots, and I think that's what you guys were trying to do, at least when we met back in July or August, was to give us room to fill in the dots ourselves. The sustainability, I have, I have no problem with putting that in. I mean, I think it's always been the city's goal some way, at least at the electric department, because they always tell us how much of that. But it's always great to grow because there's, you know, the, the, you know, the dump starts to dwindle of that, that gas, methane gas. We got to find that replacement for, for sustainability, because that's what does the waste up. But I do like it. I do like the high level, because I think high level leaves each individual council, because councils change over this year, these years, and it leaves them room to actually add what their priorities are, based upon the overall goals that you guys have set for the, for the city, and that the citizens have helped us set. And, you know, I don't like to get into the minutia now, tonight, because that's, that's really our job, at a point when staff gives us feedback. So I appreciate all the time and effort you guys did, because that's the way I took the plan, and maybe it's not the way you meant it, but I liked that every council now can have its own flavor and taste as this thing goes, because five, six years, there's going to be a whole different outlook on environmental stewardship than there is right now. Things are changing, electric cars, you know, combustible engines. How many articles have we read? Hydrogen, nitro, water as using that. But, but you've left it broad enough for us to play with those goals, and I do appreciate that. And I can understand people thinking they're not specific enough, but I've been on the council long enough to know that specific goals, sometimes they can't be met by budget constraints, and doing specific goals kind of make it look like we're not doing what the citizens wanted, but leaving it broad enough. And then it also leaves the citizens time to come back to give us more input on what they're thinking about this. Citizens have specific goals after they see these plans, and, and that gives us some room to, I don't want to say, it gives us room to discuss that. And there's great ideas that were all brought up tonight, but I think those are filling in those dots beneath some of these goals. At least that's the way I wrote this plan, and I think it was one of the best plans I've seen, actually. And I've been on the council almost 16 years, so I've seen a few of them. But it was, it was readable. I understood it. I, I think Alderman Bruno, Alderperson Bruno, had a great idea somehow on the website, if it could be combined a little bit, so you weren't on, because I did find myself flipping between two screens, too, to make sure that it was there. But, but everything I think that we talked about in August, you made those changes. You know, we had some very lively discussions that night, and, and you seemed to have filled those all in. And I think, I think we've got, I think we've got a good goal, I think we've got a good roadmap for the community, and yet there's going to be forks in the roads where the council and other committees are going to have to make decisions. But I do like the way this is laid out, and I do know that this probably took a lot of time. And I do appreciate that time that you have all spent on it, because it is well laid out, for, at least the way I was looking at the plan. So thank you. Mayor, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. I'll ask Alderperson Patchy if she would like to chime in remotely, and then I'll come back to the folks.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to, to reiterate, I just appreciate the time that went into this. I also didn't struggle to understand it myself. I would say I agree with Alderperson Swanson about adding the percentage of renewable energy as, as from the total of our electric generation. I think having that as a key outcome indicator would be important under the environmental stewardship section. And I also agree with Alderperson Bowery about adding organic waste, not just recycling, but also organic waste. I think that's an important thing moving forward. But aside from that, I think it's a helpful guiding document, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderperson Kilburn?
Has everybody had a chance?
I believe so.
Okay. No, I just had a couple. I wasn't able to find any reference to the possibility of a referendum. Did I miss it?
No, it's not in there.
Okay. I mean, I think.
What's in there is the facilities master plan, developing the plan and determining funding options.
Okay, that's how it's, okay, which would require a referendum.
Potentially.
Yeah. No, I, I just think it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty important goal, I think, for, for the council over the next year to, to, to establish some type of an outcome as it relates to our facility needs. And obviously, we acquired a, a library over a year ago, and we really need to, I think, share with the community in our strategic plans that that's a topic that we're going to be addressing over the next 12 months, and that it's, it's just not a case where it's going to continue to, to, to be a structure in the downtown that nothing's happening with. So I think the fact that it's, it's not included, or at least referenced, I think we're, we're, we're missing something, I think, that's pretty important as it relates to the community, and especially the tax considerations and the things that are going to come into play as we engage the community over the next few months.
So, if I may, Dean, on page 15 of the packet, so that makes it page 12, I believe, Winnie, under potential, you know, you got facilities meet community needs, the city takes action to provide modern facilities, et cetera, and then under potential actions, adopt a facilities master plan, evaluate and make recommendations regarding potential funding sources. So I think that's where it's addressed. Again, as we said, the potential actions are broad. They're not specific until we know what direction we're heading.
Okay. I mean, if I wasn't attending council meetings on a weekly basis, I guess I might miss the point that I'm trying to make. The other would be, for instance, the, the other lingering issue that we're going to have to address over the next six or seven months would be the status of the dam, and the fact that there are environmental as well as economic considerations that come into play with the future of the dam. And again, I don't know how we might incorporate that into our planning, but I think, again, this is something that is, it's going to have long-term ramifications, and I think it's a, it's a topic that an element of the community is engaged with, and I think that the fact that we're going to take, take some type of action as it relates to a decision likely in 2025, again, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe, again, that's been vaguely referenced somewhere in the plan, but I think it's something that, again, we, we, we should give some thought or consideration, too. Okay, those were two other things that I had that I, I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Bowery.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly agree with some of my counterparts. I think the suggestions Alderperson Swanson had about honing in on some of the indicators was, I agree with it. I think energy from renewables, including the number of affordable housing units, I think makes that a little more concrete, because compliance, we have to comply, or take other action, but I think that that would be a helpful metric for the public to track. And I may be forgetting some of the other ones that you brought up, but I thought that those were useful additions. Thanks.
Alderperson Maladra.
Okay. Thank you all. Unlike our meeting in August, I was quiet tonight, and that was because I wanted to hear the feedback from my partners on the council. I thought everything I heard tonight was good. Whether I agree with it or not, doesn't matter. What was important to me is it shows ownership of the plan. I've heard a few times this year, people try to distance themselves or the council from our strategic plan, and you can't, you can't do that. This is an important component of a framework that we use to try to manage change. And I can tell from the feedback that I heard tonight that this council, at least, is very engaged and fully embraces ownership of the strategic plan, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Madam Chair, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I am appreciative of everyone's comments and feedback. I agree with Alderman Maladra, and I look forward to hearing what you all decide.
Mr. McCree, is there anything?
[laughing]
Mr. McCree, is there anything you want to add?
No, I'd just add, I mean, I think, you know, what we heard is helpful. Many, many of the comments that were brought up, I would say, is in alignment with SPAC's vision for the reporting of the indicators. So the words that you see here for the indicators, when you go back in the detail, you're, you're very much in the right mindset of how information would be reported. So I think we're, I think we're in lockstep here on most every item that we can put into the plan. There may be some items, I would say, that have been discussed tonight that probably require some further policy discussions. A key part of discussed tonight that probably require some further policy discussions. A key part of those targets and those indicators is having direction of where we're going. A big part of what SPAC was trying to do was get away from saying increase or decrease items, and to be specific with where we want to head in the future, which, which I think there's still probably some discussion we had to vet, what some, what I've heard suggested as far as where we want to get to with some of those. And, again, that's out of a desire to make sure that you have a plan that's actionable, that you have something concrete to measure against, and figure out where you're, where we're trying to get to.
Any last-minute comments or questions prior to taking a roll call vote? We have a motion by Casarog and a second by Bruno. The floor is open for any questions or comments. Clerk Kellogg, please take the roll call.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Pashke, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero Alderpersons absent, the Resolution 2024-94, adopting the 2030 strategic plan document, is approved.
Mayor? Yes, sir. I just want to make one comment. I think as long as I've been on here, this is probably the most discussion we've ever had when we've actually adopted the strategic, the strategic, the strategic plan on the night we voted on it. We've had meetings before, but I think this is one where we can really tell, like Alderman Person Maladra said, the council's buying into this. And, and that says a lot, because this usually gets voted on very quickly, and a little bit of a discussion, but not like tonight. And, and I tell you, that, that to me leads that you guys did a real good plan, and that the council's buying into it. And I think that needed to be said after the vote, and, and I appreciate you giving me that opportunity.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. McCready?
Just a few final parting words. I want to personally share my thanks to SPAC, my colleague, City Department Director, City Administrator, and as well as all the residents, stakeholders, business owners throughout the community who took time, whether it was a interview, focus group, or even just taking some time to hop in the iPad and fill out that survey for us. That's what made revamping, revising, updating the plan possible. And, again, we couldn't do this as well without the assistance of CP2 and Cory here locally. She was an immense help to all of our efforts. And, again, I want to give a shout out to one of our newest employees, Joe Vizo. He hit the ground running, arrived here at the city, and helped us back do some really great work with promoting our forum, getting the word out there about where we're at, and we're looking forward to, I know, working with him here, moving forward with those very updates you talked about, looking at some different ways to help keep the community attuned to where we're at. So, thank you. I'm sure I left a name out here as well. Kevin Starr, again, for thanklessly trying to, working with us to get this in every Friday e-blast we could along the way over the past few months. So, again, thank you to everyone who was a big help to this.
Public comment portion of the program. Anyone joining us this evening, which includes, of course, our SPAC members? Any comments, questions you'd like to present to the council? Your chance to speak, our chance to listen. If not, we jump to new business. This is an opportunity for the council members to share. Alderperson Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize Alderperson Maladra for his last meeting. Some glowing words were said last, last time, but I'll repeat some of them. You've, you've been a, in my mind, the most thoughtful, pragmatic voice on the council, and I appreciate your tutelage and, and working alongside you.
Thank you.
Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, I wanted to thank you, too. It's, it's been a pleasure serving the Fifth Ward with you for the, the past almost eight years, and I appreciate all of the additional assistance you gave me making the transition, being a new Alderperson, very easy, all the work that you did, and I appreciate that. We disagreed on a lot of items, and were able to talk through them. Unfortunately, I never changed your mind on anything, and that really bothered me, but that's the way it goes. And, and one thing that, that you did do over the eight-year period, I think a couple of years ago, you said that an Alderperson said that you speak in paragraphs, not in bullet points. I think when I first came on the council, you spoke in chapters, and, and I used to take notes when people were speaking, and I remember one meeting, I said 8:05, Craig starts talking, and at 8:36, I said, still talking, and it was a half hour. So, you, you, you've improved in that way, but I, but I appreciate all the work you've done in the, your, your, what you've done for Geneva and being a council member for so long. So, thank you, and good luck to you in your future endeavors.
Thanks. My turn?
Yeah, go ahead. I will not be recognizing Alderperson Maladra this evening. Craig, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I don't need any more of that.
The floor is yours.
All right, thanks. Someone said to me not so long ago, you've been on the council for a long time, but what have you done? That question bothered me, because I never thought that the work would be about me or about what I've done. It's always been about what we do, elected officials, working with Geneva's residents and businesses. And over the past 21 years, we've done a lot. My first term on the City Council was focused on getting our arms around change. We established a framework of plans and process that enables us to address the challenges posed by change while keeping an eye on our vision for the long term. Creating this framework was a community effort, and maintaining it is also a community effort. As we've seen tonight, we continue to work on it. It's a long, winding, and often bumpy road, but the effort is necessary, because it's the strategic framework that enables us to face the storms of today while working toward our vision for tomorrow. And we have faced many storms. When I began working with the city, change was happening quickly. The development of the Randall Road retail corridor, the increase in housing units west of Randall Road, and the start of teardown and infill development had many people worried that we would lose the characteristics that make Geneva unique. Then, we were hit by a great recession that shook the financial foundations of families, businesses, and governments around the world, and change like that came to a halt, which also frightened people. And then there was the pandemic, a crisis unlike anything any of us had seen before. Navigating through these storms requires commitment, courage, and compromise, and we've come through, because we've worked together. It hasn't been easy, and it never is going to be easy. People have different views of every proposal, every issue, every challenge, and often those views are held and expressed with passion. Disagreement is not a problem, Bob. Ideas are better when well-informed. It's the reaction to the final decision that can be and sometimes has been a problem. As trite as it may sound, we do need to be careful to respectfully disagree, which Alderman Swanson and I have learned to do quite well. We also need to be open to learning, because as educated and experienced as we might be, there are intricacies to government work that those of us with careers in the private sector are unfamiliar with. And it's to those people who have tried to teach me over the years that I wish to extend my thanks tonight. Specifically, Mary Lou Halleran, for her commitment to Geneva and her belief in what we can accomplish if we work together. Tim Moran, who talked me into running for the City Council. Actually, he ran for the First Ward, and I ran for the Fifth Ward. I would say it should have been him, but then we would have missed his talent and dedication and other areas of service to the community. Esther Steele, who kept talking me into running for reelection. She taught me how to run. She was also the first person to show me that it's possible to disagree about something and yet look for common ground and work together to move forward from that base. Dick Unch, who had the patience to teach me the complexities of community planning and development, not that I completely understand it, which is something David de Groot has had to put up with. Mayor McKittrick and Stephanie Dawkins, who never objected when I would barge into their office with questions. Ideas, complaints are just stories. They worked hard to lend the benefit of their knowledge and experience, knowing that I would come to my own, sometimes contrary, conclusions. Kevin Burns, with whom I've had more arguments than anyone else besides my dad and my wife. We've been working at this for a long time, so it shouldn't surprise anybody that we agree on the big picture. We don't always agree on how to get there, but the fun is in hashing it out. There are many more people who I need to thank, but we don't have time for that tonight. But, I do need to offer special thanks to my wife. She's probably not watching, because she says she enjoys Monday nights because she gets to control the TV remote when I'm not there. But, the work extends beyond Mondays, and she never begrudged me the time required to do the job. And whenever I'd come home, wondering if I'd made a mistake because other people saw things differently than I did, she would tell me not to worry, as long as I did my homework and listened to what everyone had to say. And if I've done anything, that's all. I do the homework, I listen to people, and I take a position based on what I feel to be our long-term best interests. It's been an honor to serve the community. Thank you very much.
Craig, it's tradition that we, A, ask for your key fob.
That doesn't look like you, Howard.
No, you couldn't afford it. It's not a financial stewardship. You couldn't afford it. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we have item five, which is to adjourn to closed session on pending litigation pursuant to 5 Illinois Compiles Statute, Section 12, excuse me, 120 slash 2. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Bowery, seconded by Bruno. Roll call, please.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Pashke, aye.
Swanson?
Aye. There is no action being taken this evening. We do ask those joining us to kindly leave us to our lovely chamber, and you guys get to find more comfortable seats at home. Thank you, thank you, everyone, very much. We're back in open session, folks. If there's nothing else for the benefit of this council and community, I will gladly entertain a motion to adjourn. Casarog makes the motion. All in favor?
Stay in print.
Please say aye. Thank you, everyone.